Hi, everybody. I'm Kimberly Ton, Brookings Area Chamber of Commerce Membership Director. I want to welcome you today. This recording and webinar is brought to you by the Brookings Area Chamber of Commerce Public Affairs Committee. And right away, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Don Norton, who has been kind enough to be our moderator today.
Well, thank you very much, Kimberly. And good late afternoon, everyone. Good late snowy afternoon when this is being recorded. As Kimberly said, I'm Don Norton. I'm the CEO of the South Dakota Agricultural and Rural Leadership Foundation, based here in Brookings. I'll be your moderator. And we're featuring the candidates for the Brookings County Commission at large to be voted on in November. Candidates with us on the program include Ryan Krogman, who's an incumbent Republican, Mike Bartley, an incumbent Republican, and candidate Tim Bauer, running as an independent. On November 3rd, voters will select two of these three candidates for county commission seats. Commissioners are voted to four-year terms on a staggered basis. There are, in fact, five commissioners total. So, welcome to our candidates and to those joining us live on our webinar. As I said, this program will be made available by the Chamber of Commerce for watching at a later date, so we are recording. If you have questions, you can type them in the chat box on your screen, and we'll see if we can get to those. We're going to demonstrate to America tonight that civil discourse is alive and well and thriving in Brookings County, South Dakota. So, I'm sure our candidates will abide by our time restraints and get some good lively discussion going. So, at this time, I would like to introduce our candidates, have them introduce themselves, actually, maybe take two minutes each. Tell us about your career and why you would like to serve in public office or continue serving if you're an incumbent. So, let's start with those incumbents. Maybe Mr. Krogman.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity. Again, appreciate the Chamber of Commerce, Government Affairs, you, Don, for our moderator, and Kimberly getting this started. So, I'm going for my third term here on the county commission. Born and raised in Brookings, South Dakota, lifelong county resident. Went to high school, Brookings High School, graduated from South Dakota State University, and am a small business owner here in town with Century 21, Krogman and Company. And so, in real estate now in the area for 23 years. Owner of the business now for going on 19 years. So, appreciate, again, the opportunity to serve. Have been doing that now for eight years, and would appreciate the opportunity to do another four.
Is this a term limit position? So, this would be your last term?
No, it is not. It's not a term limit there. The voters will term limit you if you do a bad job. So, no, it is not a term limit. But I will, I'm considering here making this my last term, doing a self-imposed term limit of 12 years. I'm thinking is probably enough at that time if I'm lucky enough to get voted there for the third term.
Well, thank you, and appreciate your clarifying the terms there. And Mr. Bartley?
All right. Well, thank you, Don. Thank you to the chamber, too. I hope we have some people watching. I know there's a big meeting going on at the city at the same time. So, I appreciate those who are watching, watching us instead of the city council meeting. I've lived in Brookings since 1974. I'm originally from Austin, Minnesota. I'm an Austin Packer, I guess. Moved here in 1974 to run an optical business for Dr. Ron Tash, an ophthalmologist. And I've been here ever since. And this is, I've lived here longer than I've lived anywhere. I am a licensed hearing aid dispenser, a licensed optician. I had an optical business. I've been bartley opticians for a number of years in New Yorkshire Clinic. I sold that to the Brookings Health System about a year and a half ago, and relocated the hearing aid business over in the Merchant Building. So, I've got quite a history with boards and licenses. I was on the state licensing board for hearing aid dispensers for 22 years, and served on that board. I also served on the Brookings City Council for six years. Served on the Board of Adjustments, served on the Brookings City Planning Commission for a number of years, too. So, I've got quite a history of public service. I've often said that people need to do public service. It's the greatest service I think you can do for everyone else out there is to volunteer your time and talents, common sense, hopefully, to issues. I like solving issues. I like listening to people's opinions. And so, I'm at about three and a half years on the county commission, and Ryan will probably agree with this. It takes you about that long to learn everything that's going on sometimes with our budgeting process and things of that nature. So, I'm fortunate enough to get reelected. I will serve for another four years. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much, Mr. Bartley. And now, let's move to Tim Bauer. Tim, tell us about yourself.
Hi, Tim Bauer. I've been born, I've lived in Brookings County all my life. Went to Elton High School, and I farmed, I farmed in Elton since 1984 until the present. I'm still farming. That, and I've been 18 years on the Elton School Board. And that, this year, I decided it was time to get off and move on to something else. And I've served seven, eight years with the Brookings County Weed and Pest Committee Board, and that. Like I said, I've lived in Brookings County all my life. So, I guess that one reason, that's kind of what I thought I wanted to see, try to get the outside of the county representative on the east side of the counties. And, I mean, other people have asked a little bit about that, you know. And I, kind of like Bartley, I feel that public service is one of the nice things after being on 18 years on the Elton School Board with people. So, answering their questions. They come and talk to me. They've been really free of asking me versus some other people, and said that I was pretty easy to talk with and listen and things and that. And I'm, you know, trying to learn, learn what goes on in the county a little bit. I've been watching it on the TV for the past couple of years on the meetings and whatnot. And I said, that's what really kind of got me interested in to move on and take, try to take a position on if I can get on the board. Okay?
Very good. Thank you so much. I appreciate your updating us, gentlemen, on your backgrounds and your work in public service. I'm going to go to our first question now, and each person can take three minutes to respond. Economic development is a big issue. What is your short-term and long-term vision for economic development in Brookings County? And then, the other part of that is, how will your service on the commission actually help us realize that vision? I'm going to start with Mr. Bartley.
All right. Well, when we look at economic development from the county's perspective, we don't necessarily create jobs. We don't necessarily go out and recruit businesses. But we are involved with all the communities in the county and their economic development plans and what they do. Always, always interested in those things. Our main purpose, I guess, is to get people to those communities through our roads, our bridges, our township roads. Access to those areas is important. How we maintain those things is important for their economic development. If we do our job and those communities do their job, we'll see some economic growth in the county. So, I look at it, the short part of it is, it's really critical for us to make sure that we keep that transportation corridors open and effective and in good shape and fund those unnecessarily. And we can maybe talk about that later. But we've done a good job with bridge improvement grants for those types of things. If you can get the product to market, it makes a big difference than if you can't. So, that's what, that's economic development for us on the county side.
Very good. I'm going to ask Mr. Bauer the same question. What's your short-term and long-term vision for economic development in Brookings County? And how is your service going to help that?
Well, I guess I've never given it a thought. Now, I think, you know, just by getting on the board, I'm going to learn a little more about how a county lives and whatnot. And I do listen to the people, try to help them bring their vote to the table to move on and get the roads, keep the roads and whatnot. Because there's a lot to learn about the taxes and whatnot, and how the county actually gets all their money. When I was on the Elton School Board, I felt it took me three to four years to learn everything of how you can generate the tax money to go and build anything or change anything. So, I guess right now, I, you know, until I really can learn to get on the board, that, you know, the development, I'd be for a lot of it, you know. There are some of these large dairies and things that are out in the counties and different cities and what goes on, you know. They've taken a lot of grief to get to that point. So, I mean, I think I can maybe help a little bit on the agriculture side of it. Thanks. Okay?
Mr. Bartley, I'm going to go back to you real quickly. How about you with dairy development in Brookings County?
Well, I think we've done a pretty good job up to this point. Anytime we start talking about CAFOs and all this, raise those hackles for some people. It's been a good economic growth opportunity for the county. I think one dairy cow, I think somebody mentioned is $15,000 a year in economic benefit to a community or to the, to the county. So, when you look at those types of things, in addition to the dairies would be the windfarms. There are some tax advantages in addition to that. There are some TIF programs out for the windfarms that help that development happen. I don't know if we're maxed out on windfarms yet or not. I'm not sure if we're maxed out on CAFOs yet. We did have one that had come in, I think Ryan can refresh my memory on, but the last two years, we had one application that came through the plant commission, and it basically was pulled because of some opposition and the company went elsewhere into Minnesota. So, we don't want to lose those opportunities. We want to make sure that we offer the right zoning areas for those things. That's always important. And if we can, and it can work, I think it's a great economic opportunity for the county.
Thank you. And I don't want to neglect you, Mr. Krogman. I just wanted to be sure to get that, that animal agriculture question as part of this overall question on economic development and long and short-term vision that you might have for Brookings County. You have to unmute?
There we go. I think, you know, our short-term, you know, vision is to continue to make sure that dairy producers can get their product to where they need to go efficiently and quickly. But long-term, you know, I think that those value-added businesses that relocate in Brookings, like Novita, you know, Valero, and soybean processors, really add a tremendous amount of economic development and turnaround for our county, including property taxes, that helps spread that base of, off of the ag and off the residential and onto some of the commercial and provide jobs and stuff, too, along with, you know, the dairy cattle and that for, for our new dairy farmers in the area and the production that helps with that, those types of things. We have to be a partner in that. We can't do that and take the lead as much. We need to partner. One of the lead organizations is the Brookings Economic Development Corporation. I was on there for 12 years prior to the county commission. And we, as a Brookings County, can partner with them to recruit and help bring in economic development similar to the Bell Brands that brought the value-added to our dairy farmers in the area and then provided a tremendous amount of workforce opportunity in the area. So, I think we want to be a willing and partner with all the cities, municipalities in the county, and all the potential value-added ag business that can, can come forward for us.
Very good.
I might just add on. Ryan mentioned Bell Manufacturing. I was president of the Brookings Economic Development Corporation when we dealt with recruiting the Bell Corporation to build here. And it was quite an experience. It's quite, quite a company. I think it's been a really good asset, value-added asset for agriculture in our community and the dairy farmers, too. So, I learned a lot with the Bell recruitment.
I think that dairy operation that went to Hamlin County, I think, South Dakota, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I think a cow is about $26,000 in economic development.
Okay.
You can't sell a cow short. I've learned that in my agricultural experience. Anyway, appreciate your, your sense of humor. So, one of the more controversial issues that has come up in the past year has been the location of the jail. And as you know, some people didn't want it in that particular neighborhood, at least the expansion next to the current location. So, could you explain your position on the jail, having a jail built now adjacent to the current jail and the courthouse? Mr. Bauer, where do you, where do you weigh in on that decision that has already been made?
Well, I think that was probably the best choice, really, rather than trying to find a whole new site to build it on for dollars and cents. I mean, from what I've understood of what it costs is in that. It, to me, I think it's the right thing. I mean, I don't know if it's the right thing to have it in the middle of the town. I think that was one of the biggest reasons. A lot of the people wouldn't like to see it moved to a different location if the county could have found the right place to take it to. But where would be the right place to be taken? That more I think about, you know, you look at the state pen down in Sioux Falls, it kind of lives in the middle of the cities, kind of, you know, the whole, whole development around that area. So, I think they made the right choice of putting it where it belonged or was to the, especially to get to the people to court and things like that. So, I think it was a smart move for the county. So.
Okay, very good. Mr. Krogman, you were part of that decision. What was rattling around in the, in the chambers at that time?
Well, you know, we had to take a lot of things into consideration. And it was not just necessarily the location, but safety of our employees and efficiency of our justice system and costs and transportation and what would happen if we moved it off-site. We also had to look available sites and preparation for those sites and what was available and what those costs were. So, it, we couldn't just sit and look and say, okay, it's right here. And so, we just, this is the one thing we have to think about. We had to think about multiple things. We didn't have that luxury of just saying it's in historic district, so we got to move it. We needed to look at a lot of other things and take that into consideration. And so, when you added all the checks where the pluses and the minuses, and that's kind of how I put it together, was what were the pluses of staying into that area and building on, and what were the minuses? And then, what were the pluses and the minuses of completely relocating into somebody else's backyard, which I wasn't a big fan of. That's, you know, I'm not a big fan of turn around, putting the jail next to somebody else's, you know, farm out next, outside of town, outside of state limits. And they were like, well, why is it going here? They're not going to be happy. And we looked at the utility opportunities, and utilities kind of stopped at the, at the edge of town. And so, those types of things weighed into our decision. And I think, when I checked all the boxes, it seemed like there were much more positive things to stay where we were at, put the expansion on, and allow us to, to build where we're, where we're at. We were taking care of, we were getting rid of some razor wire. We were getting rid of some unsightly things along there with some sheds and some parking lots. And we were going to, and we really worked on trying to make sure that it fit into the neighborhood, too, knowing that, you know, we, it was going to be a larger building. And we wanted to try to let it fit in as much as possible. But I think, you know, with that expansion, the benefits where it's at, they outweighed keeping it there than it did moving it out.
Mr. Bartley, you, you were involved in that decision as well. What, what were your thoughts?
I came to, I came to the discussion after, because I got on the council three and a half years ago. So, I look at it, and it was already a committee that was put together of interested residents in the community and business leaders. And that committee, I was not on it, but had done a awful lot of footwork and study to determine other sites, determine where it should be located there, understanding the historical preservation or historical significance of our courthouse. And by the way, we love our courthouse. We put a lot of money into it. The county maintains that facility, does its upgrades, and we're not going to do anything to destroy that significance. So, we looked at that also. And as Ryan said, there was a long process, a lot of steps we had to go through, a lot of redesign to make sure that we built something that would complement the neighborhood and not distract from the neighborhood. And as he said, safety was a big concern. We didn't want the razor wire out there. We didn't want inmates transported outside of a secure facility. This facility will have a Sally Port where the patrol car comes in, loads and unloads inmates in a secure facility and back out again. So, it's a, we had a jail that, in all honesty, I think we were probably set up for a lawsuit at some point, not necessarily from an inmate, but from a family member of an inmate that may have, had been wronged in our system. And because our system wasn't up to code, so to speak, with new jails. And so, the process for me was, are we going to be able to build something there on that site that's large enough to satisfy all those needs? And we were able to do that, and our architects helped with that. And we also, I can't remember the figure, but we're almost a million dollars more on the exterior of the building to make it fit into the neighborhood in a fashion we think is good. We did resolve our, our issue with the lawsuit with the city. I thank them for that. That helped us get this project started so we can get it done by 2021. It's about an 18-month process to build a jail. And yeah, that's a tough process with the streets torn up and things of that nature. But I think everybody will be happy when we're done. And we'll hopefully have a nice tour for everybody, maybe a free overnight in the jail if you want one.
Very good. So, it looks like, yeah, it looks like the three of you are all in consensus on that decision. Let's move on to our next question, if we could. The city of Brookings has been called the most lockdown city in the state regarding COVID-19 precautions. And since the city has a profound impact on the economics of the county, in your opinion, has the city made the correct decision with the COVID mandates? And would you support expanding similar mandates across the county, even though you may not have the jurisdiction to actually do it? I'm going to start with you, Mr. Krogman.
No, I, you know, I'm not a big fan of locking it down at all. I think their, the business owners have a, have a choice that they can make to run their business the way they want to do that. And if they require masks, they require masks. And along also, I think that the patrons of that business have the right to decide if they want to wear a mask or not. And if they don't, they don't have to go in. You know, I think our businesses are resilient. I think they'll find ways to, to, to serve their customers, whether it's, you know, takeout or delivery. And you've just seen that throughout. To shut them down completely, I don't think is going to solve the problem. I think it's going to create another one. And I just, I don't want the solution to be more of a detriment than the problem. And I think by shutting everything down, you'd be doing that. You'd be just piling on top already a bad situation. And it is, it's a terrible situation. People are dying every day. People are getting sick every day. And, and I'm not sure there's a right answer, just like every professional has a different opinion on it. I do think masks are important. I think they would help curb the, the spread of the virus. But I think the virus lives on all different surfaces, too. So, there's people that have worn a mask religiously that have gotten the virus. And so, that just tells me that shutting it down isn't going to just stop it. It's just going to cause more problems. So, I would, I would trust the business owners to do a good job, because there isn't a business owner here. I look in my, my line of work, there isn't a business owner here that wants a COVID breakout in their business, because that's just going to be negative for them. It'll be, agents may not show up. People, you know, in my line of business may not want to list with us if a bunch of Century 21 agents were full of COVID. So, we take steps to try to curb that. But we don't make a requirement for all of our people to do that. So, we try to take steps to protect ourselves. And I think every business would do that, to try to protect themselves, because I think the alternative of having that out would be just as bad as shutting people down. So, I would let the businesses take care of themselves. I think the people have the right to wear the mask, or if they don't, just like they have the right to go into a business or not. But I am a proponent of the mask. I do think we should do that. I think it's, it's a good thing to do for your citizens, for your community, for your neighbors, to protect your neighbors. It doesn't seem to be that difficult. But I think it's going too far to mandate it.
Mr. Bartley, are we marching down the right direction on COVID mandates?
Much like Commissioner Krogman, I'm not in support of shutting things down. I just think that our economy, our economy is too important to us right now to lose it. I don't think the recovery from that, the cost of that is justifiable by shutting things down. I do know the business owners, back when this first started, we did have bars downtown that closed before the city asked them to close. So, businesses are, as Ryan said, they're not stupid. They're not going to do anything that's going to affect their business, and nobody's going to come into it. So, I think if we give them the opportunity to say how they operate their businesses in a safe and effective manner, that's more effective than forcing them. And as far as a mask mandate all the time, I have a problem with telling people they have to wear a mask, because I think people just automatically start to push back whenever they're told to do something. I think you'd have a lot more cooperation if, if you'd let people make that decision on their own. And the reality at that point is if, if I want to wear a mask, I should wear a mask. If I feel like I should, nobody's telling me I have to. But personal choice, I think, reigns high in that decision, whether I'm going to wear a mask or not. Not if somebody tells me I have to do it. But there's a pushback there I don't like. So, I don't, the histories or the effectiveness of masks is still in question, obviously, depending on whether you want to wear one or not. But as soon as it's mandated, that, that economy becomes even larger, is it work or doesn't it work? And unfortunately, whether it works or not, it doesn't hurt anything to wear. It's real simple in that regard. So, get rid of the mandate. I think more people will probably comply because it makes common sense.
Mr. Bauer, what are your thoughts on that? Are, are we marching down the right direction with COVID mandates? Or what should our towns do? And how do you back that as a potential member of the county commissioners?
Well, I guess I agree with both of Bartley and Krogman. I mean, I don't think the businesses and the persons itself should get, they should have the choice if they're going to wear them or not wear them, you know. You know, if you want to go into the business, if they ask you to put a mask on, put a mask on. I mean, or if you don't want to put a mask on, stay out. I mean, I agree 100%. I mean, I, I don't think that, yeah, the mandate is the right way to go, myself. I mean, because we, we do, we got rights that we're supposed to have, you know, about what we should do and can do. And, I mean, I think all people are going to use their head and make the right choice of what they feel is right. I mean, I, I have no problem. I wear a mask every once in a while. I mean, not 100% of the time. But I'm working outside most of the time on the agriculture side of it. But, you know, the only time I go to town is when I need some repairs for, for my tractors or something like that. And, you know, they, you know, and the things are, the businesses have put up their screens and that, that try to keep you separate from face-to-face, six-foot things. I mean, is six-foot enough, enough space? I don't know about that either, you know. Is it? I mean, our flu seasons and that, we've never done nothing to prevent having a flu thing. And it was, it's kind of an epidemic thing. There have been a lot of people that have died from flus. But we've never got that excited to start closing down bars and food places just because so many people have been dying from the flu seasons and that. And that's coming around. And the sad thing is, is all these epidemics and whatnot, all got the same feelings of what, what goes on, you know. So, how do you know which one you got? Do you got the flu? Do you got the COBA? I don't know, you know. So, I think it's up to the business owners and the person itself to make that choice if they're going to wear the mask or not.
Okay. Thank you for your answer. I'm going to start with Mr. Bartley on this next question, which is also kind of COVID-related. The state of South Dakota has been given 1.5 billion with a B dollars in federal COVID aid. Are you pleased with the way the legislature is spending that money? Or would you like to see a little more of that come closer to home?
Well, there's two, two theories to my position on the money. One is, do we really need it at 1.2? We're, we're really going to tax our future generations with paying all this money back. And we're in a position where everybody wants to spend every dollar. And so, they're trying to figure out a way to do it. And the rules keep changing on how we spend that money. I don't disagree that it's been spent well up to this point. I know the county takes advantage of it. I think we heard today that we're over 1.2 million, I believe it was a figure, that we've received of COVID money to reimburse us for expenses for the share of salary and so forth. But you have to spend that money, but then it comes back to you and it goes into our general fund, and we can use it as deemed necessary. So, that part of it kind of, you know, bothers me a little bit, because I hate spending money. We, we tax ourselves to death. And so, that, that bothers me. As far as the program the governor put out with small businesses applying, I looked at that, and my business did not, did not qualify, thankfully. But there are plenty that did and have the use of But there are plenty that did and have the use of those funds. We'll see how they administrate it and, and put that money out. But I don't even think with that, that they're coming quite close to spending the 1.2 billion. I could be wrong on that, but that's a lot, that's more than our state budget, I think, one year.
And I think 400, 400 million was set aside for a small business out of that billion and a half. So there, there's a lot, a lot of money left there. Mr. Bauer, how, how do you think the COVID funds should be spent? Are they being spent wisely?
Yeah, I, I don't really know. I just kind of heard about it yesterday, how that the state has entered into this deal at another meeting that I was at. So I, I really think if they're probably spending it the way it needs to be spent, you know, to help keep these small businesses going, you know, through this epidemic and that. So I guess that's kind of where I'm going to leave it be at that point.
Okay. Mr. Krogman, do you agree with the way the legislature has, and the governor has allocated that one and a half billion dollars?
Yeah, you know, I, and I, I do have, I think we're going to have a tough time finding a place for all that money. I don't know if it hit us as hard as it has other states, but I do like the idea of the small businesses because sometimes there's businesses, the small fall through the cracks that didn't qualify. And I think if we could use that state money to fill those, those loopholes of people that fell through from the, the PPE for the first time, I think that would be very beneficial. But also if we're going to be shutting down businesses again, this time if we're doing that. Last time there was federal help. Now the way federal government's going, doesn't look like they're going to agree on anything out there. So this is where I think the state would have the opportunity to help do a program for our, our, our small businesses. If, if shutdowns begin here around the state of mandatory shutdowns that they could then qualify for another round. But that would be state driven rather than federal driven, then we could get something done with it. That would be something I would like to take a look at. And, and, and I just, if they can try to identify those loopholes, those people, those businesses that are not able to get those funds the first time, then maybe they could get in and, and get this now and, and, and help them get, get back. And because if, if this keeps going for six, eight months, which it certainly could be, it looks like it's going to be those, that stress is financially is really going to be hard to keep the doors open with. And so I think if the state can identify those and try to get those dollars to those right place would be efficient. And I, and I have confidence in our legislators there. They're just like you and I, you know, they go to work every day and then they spend two or three months away from their families, trying to do business, and then they come back and have to live in it. And so I like our legislature, I like the way it's set up. And I think, you know, the people that are out there, they've got a job to do in a couple of months and then they come back and do the best they can. And like I said, they're just, they're not career politicians. They, they're just like us. They come back and, and pay their taxes and, and, and work and live in South Dakota. So I, I, I trust what they're looking at doing and I think we'll be in good hands.
Very good. Well, South Dakota voters and Brookings County voters are going to be asked to decide some amendments coming up in the November election. Amendment A legalizes marijuana for recreational use. Initiated measure 26 legalizes marijuana for medical use. As a county official, how would you recommend county residents vote on these measures? And I'm going to start with Mr. Bauer.
I think for the medical, medical side of it, I think it's a good deal. But for recreational, I, I don't. I would, I'd vote yes on the medical and no on the recreational side.
From a county standpoint, what are the implications there if, if marijuana is legalized?
Well, it, it's going to make it a little harder for the sheriff departments to determine if they have a doctor's note or prescriptions to be able to have the marijuana. And I can see people that do have prescriptions, they'll have friends and maybe, hey, you know, you want a little bit, you know? Cause that's what they've been doing all the time as a recreational side. But I mean, that, that, that's going to be the hardest part is for the sheriff departments or any, any legal department like that to determine if, you know, do they have, you know, the doctors for it, you know? So.
Very good. Mr. Krogman, you're next. Amendment A legalizes marijuana for recreational use, initiated measure 26 for medical use. Where does that resonate with our county?
You know, I think it's going to be, it's going to be taxing on, on our law enforcement and our jail and, and our justice system. I, I think it's going to be, you know, they've talked about it as a gateway drug. And, and I worry about, you know, what this can lead to in other crimes. And I think, you know, for us, looking at it from a county aspect, like you asked, I think it will be, be tough on law enforcement. It will be tough on our jail system and, and the costs will be pretty heavy, I think, on that, that it's an addictive drug. And, and when you have people with, with addictions, it leads to them making decisions that usually are not good. And, and a lot of times that they can't control that addiction. And, and whether anything is addictive, it's the same way with alcohol. It's the same way with hard narcotics or the opioids. You know, when it's addictive, it tends to lead to, to more problems for that addict.